Like to call the meeting to order at six o'clock and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Trustee Lappin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Kroll.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Fajewski.
Here. We get a motion to adopt agenda as presented.
Is there an addenda, is there an addendum to it?
Yeah, I have, I have an addition.
Do you have any additions to the agenda?
I have an addition to the agenda, um built from Omega Electric for um the front counter circuit wiring. An outlet.
Number twelve, yeah.
I hand it out to everybody.
I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. I'll make that motion. What, uh all of those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
I oppose the same.
Motion pass. Moving on, this is the first opportunity for public comment. There's seeing nobody online, if there's anybody up in the public has comment, please approach the podium and state your name. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Their motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda if no one has anything they want pulled out of it.
Roll call please. Oh, is there, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? Being none or?
What are you, what are you looking at me for?
Any discussion about the consent agenda?
Oh, I have nothing.
Okay. Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Fajewski. Yes. Okay, moving on to old business. Uh the first item on there is the Employee Compensation Committee or Commission. Uh there are two vacancies in the committee. I have reached out to two people and not received a response yet. I believe one of them was going to reach out to you, Trustee Reiner, to talk to you about that.
Awesome.
Um, and so at this time, I don't have anybody to appoint, but we are.
Do we want to table it to the next meeting now?
When does that commission next need, isn't it?
By the end of the year is really our.
And this is the year, right?
Yeah, this is the year, yeah. So we got, we've got time. But then once uh, once we get rolling, then they're required to meet. Get my uh compensation commission head back. Doesn't take uh real long, but a good couple months to, to be safe, to give them time to meet.
What is the word composition or the authority comes, it's seven people? No, I don't mean the people, I just mean.
Five members.
Five, and so.
Registered electors of the township.
Could we go forward with three if we had to? I don't want to.
Oh, I had, uh the statute, statute's written in terms of mandatory, uh shall be a five member convention, so.
Alright, can find people.
I'm trying, so if anybody has any suggestion, right, it is a completely voluntary position.
How, have we advertised it anywhere like on?
I've just been asking around for recommendations, um but I haven't advertised it yet, and if.
I don't think we need to advertise it in, in the newspaper or anything.
No, I would put it on social media, um after I was just looking to see if the two recommendations that I got were interested.
Okay.
I, I gave a couple of.
Yeah.
Names, uh I think you probably have.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Yeah, I could come up with a couple of names.
I don't think it hurts to put it on social media either, so it's kind of out there to the public if they're interested.
Sure.
So do we need a motion to table this?
Yeah, I think we, we know keep uh.
I'll make the.
Keep it moving, yeah.
I'll support.
Uh any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Um, can we will do a voiceover on that?
All in favor of tabling the appointments for the Employee Compensation Commission until the next meeting.
Till the May.
May nineteenth.
Nineteen.
Uh all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh opposed to same, option pass. Um, the second item under old business is the website update. So we've been talking about this unfortunately for a lot longer than I think we thought we would. Um, but due to the ice storm and all the other things, it's kind of just been postponed. Uh, so we're looking to update our website, it's outdated, we have a few things that we need to change, we do have some estimates or some quotes. Uh that were presented. If there are any questions about that.
Is there three, uh do I understand three different vendors submitted, we got two from one.
Correct, three vendors, two submissions from one vendor um with a, an option for. Uh, an agenda building packet and the, and that's the current provider that we use right now, Revise.
Um, what is your recommendation?
I would recommend at this point that we go with our local um choice, it would be Vivero Industries.
I'd support that.
Well, if anybody has any questions, I know that Carlos is here.
He's here in a different capacity, but he can probably do one.
Um, I think a huge um loss for them is that they are local and they do so much for our community. I mean, when they had the ice storm, I mean, they were donating food, working, cooking, feeding people. I mean, and they don't just do it when there's an ice storm, they do this all the time. And I can say, and they provide great work, so on top of being great business people, they're also very good for our community.
I was trying to do a comparison, which was really tough. Uh, what would be great is if we could create a, some sort of a spreadsheet of. S- you know, this is what we need, uh and this is what they're offering kind of stuff. It was, it was tough to, it was tough to follow some of this stuff. I noticed that revises. One of the very same things, they charged a hundred dollars more on, on, on number two than they did on number one. So, but I couldn't really, I couldn't get a handle on where the costs are in relationship to. Um, obviously, number three was way out there. And so um how does number two compare with whichever one of the first. Um, vendors that, that made the presentation?
Are you talking about the second option from Revise?
I, I don't know.
So the first option from Revise, um to my understanding would just be basically revamping what we currently have. Um, and it's an option that doesn't have the agenda builder, the agenda builder would be something. That I think probably Haley and Lynn would use more, um maybe Michelle in trying to put the, the packets together for meetings and stuff like that. Um, I did ask them, they sent a video and I did ask them all to watch the video and kind of give me their input on it, but the general consensus was that it was not a needed.
Okay.
Part of our package.
Can, can, I don't know how closely I looked at, at the differences, and I don't have a problem. You know, I, I, of course, I'd rather do as much localism as we can, but I just wondered what the, i- if there are. What are the differences between them? Which one is, 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 is uh Levaro Industries?
Well, Steve, Carlo is here, he's here.
But he doesn't know what.
But he can go to the podium and tell you what he has to offer.
No, I understand that, but how, how does it compare with, because he's never seen this. I assume.
He may have, they were in our.
But it was in the board packet.
Oh, okay.
Last month, Carlos, did you happen?
Put down the spot.
No, that's okay, I actually, I, I took a look at the other bits.
Why don't you, come on.
Why don't you go to the podium for recording?
Alright, can you hear me okay? So I did actually get a chance to um to take a look at uh these bits about a month ago, actually, I've been monitoring these for about a month ago. And um so what I, what I can tell you is a lot of these, these items that these other vendors are offering. Um, are more on the redundant side. Uh, when I provided you guys with my quote, it was basically built around what you guys currently have there right now. And then giving you the uh, the option to add whatever you guys need, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put. What's in there right now that is redundant, whatever content is no longer redundant, we can take out. But you guys have the option to tell me, okay, well, you know, uh this is, this is everything else that, that needs to be put, uh put in, in the website. Whether uh has to be divided into separate pages or documents, um that's something that I will be in communication with whoever wants to manage that part of the uh, uh, the website. Um, my job is to make this a website, not only to look great. But it just has to make sense for, for the average person that navigates the website, because right now is, you know, it, it's. It's not very user friendly, and that's, that's where I specialize. Uh, I'm not here to, you know, obviously, you can look at, compare my quote versus the other vendors, I'm not here to, 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 to take your money. I'm here to make things work to your advantage, just so that I, every, everything makes sense, that's, that's my job. Streamline everything, uh I'm not gonna put any, I'm not gonna add any, any uh tools. Like the, there's a couple of them, I, I'm trying to follow this, there's uh a lot of, a lot of pages from these other uh vendors. Some of these are just not, they're just not, I think they're, they're just stacked on there for you guys to. To know, you know, I guess the, the option is there, but I, I, I don't know, a lot of these, a lot of these things are kind of redundant to me.
Well, and I think just to kind of add to that, one of the big differences that you'll see between Revise, for example, and um Vivero and. I can get there too. Gov stack is that um to keep in mind that the price on Revise, their original or their first quote is less. But that's because we already use them, so Viveros would be re, re, basically rebuilding and rebranding our.
Yeah, yeah, uh, well, I didn't even really, I hardly spent any time with the third one. Because it was so completely out of the pricing range.
When you say the third one, are you saying the number three?
I'm, I guess I'm the, the gov stack.
Okay, alright.
Oh, okay.
I, yeah, I guess that'd be number four.
Because that would be number four. Was Vivarone.
Yeah.
That's me, so.
Well, I, you know, anyway.
And we're, we're paying what now, less than Vivaros bid, correct?
Um, yes, and we have the most horrible website that nobody can find anything on.
And we haven't.
I agree with that.
We haven't done anything with ours.
And one thing to also keep in mind is that mine is split into uh two different, well, technically, three different items. So you have my labor, which is the fifty eight hundred, and then as the um, the thousand dollars for the ADA compliant widget that I will build. Uh specifically for this website, and then the maintenance, which is the eleven hundred, now the fifty hundred, that's just a one-time fee. Second year thereafter, all you have to do is the eleven hundred to, to get uh, to continue the maintenance. Uh, and that'll cover if, you know, if you guys need to, I'll, I'll think that the deal was, I was gonna walk through some of your staff. To make some basic updates, which is fine, uh but any other additional updates, like announcements or page additions or whatnot. That's what the maintenance uh covers.
It's covered.
Yes, which is nice, because that takes some of these things off your place, so you can focus on what matters the most, which is your day-to-day operations.
So like announcements, do you mean like if we have road closures?
Sure.
Our agenda, you'd put that on for us?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and then also just to clarify, the eleven hundred dollars is the maintenance, but then we would also add in the two hundred and four dollars yearly for.
For the hosting, correct, yeah.
And with any of them, we would have to do that um ADA compliance, right?
Because.
Correct.
Correct, we are currently not compliant, and that was kind of one of the things that drove this.
And once that's done, it's done too.
Yes, yep.
What makes it ADA compliant?
Yeah, so um for uh the ADA compliant, what I do is I built a um, a widget. That allows you to view the website in certain uh, very specific ways. Basically geared for people with certain disabilities, so if they have dyslexia, there's a way for uh, for the font to change a little bit. So that it works uh in favor of their disability, uh color blindness and just, uh, there's, there's several of them that are in there. Basically makes, it makes it easier for those people with disabilities to navigate the website.
Sorry to understand.
Well, what would also make it very easy to navigate is if you could push a button that takes you to this meeting.
Sure.
Instead of trying to.
Yeah.
Figure out where we've.
Oh my god.
Late.
We hit it.
We can do that, that's, that's doable, yeah, it is, it is very hidden, I always, I had a hard time.
Does anybody have any other questions about the website update?
So after the, this initial, it would be how much per year?
Would be.
The eleven, the eleven hundred plus a two oh four, yeah, so thirteen oh four.
Which I think brings it down less than what we.
Yeah.
Are you releasing right now?
I think we can make twelve hundred there.
Oh, okay, well, so within range either way, um and again, the thing to remember that with Revise, they are currently who we're using, so. They would be rebuilding, uh Viveros would be rebuilding our, and basically rebranding our website.
But Revise does nothing for us.
No.
We pay that fee and we don't get a lot of support.
See you next year.
Pretty much, yeah.
Here's your bill.
So I just.
It's fairly a little doing all the work.
Who owns? When you do what you do. Does the township own this or is it copyrighted to you?
No, the, the township will own it.
So if at some point in the future, you get disenchanted with us or vice versa. We don't have to spend money to buy something from.
Nope, you own the website.
We haven't signed a contract yet, but we'll look for that.
There you go.
Tim will.
We'll scratch it out there.
Bye, Brett.
Thank you for your.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions?
I'll make a motion, we um go with Vivaro Industries' website.
Nice.
Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, you're just flipping through, I want to make sure that I.
You're gonna stop looking at me.
You're gonna, you're making your motion to approve it as presented.
Does it need to be?
With the ADA, uh, right?
The attorney, with anything, or are we good with it?
We don't usually do that, but.
You can just give me any, you don't have to add that in the motion. That to me and I'll take it.
Yeah, after you're done, maybe the price will come down, right, Tim?
Yeah, that's right.
Roll call please.
I'll add a few.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Fajewski.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to new business.
I'll take Prime Results, um every three years, we. Seal coat. The parking lot here, um at Southside Fire Department and the bypass. Um, got a quote from Prime Results, didn't get a quote from anybody else.
They just didn't reply or?
Yeah, people are not replying, calling back or anything, so.
If anybody has a suggestion of somebody that we.
We've been using Prime Results and they've had the best prices.
And we've been satisfied with them.
Yes.
Right, right. From the get-go.
But do, does anybody say why, just because they don't want it or?
Well, just so you don't talk to anybody, you just leave a message or you send an email and then you get nothing back. So I would recommend that we go with Prime Results.
I'll support.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion?
Oh, I thought you.
Question.
I thought you.
I said I recommend, I, I recommend.
Recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I'll make the motion.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I thought you were.
Is, um.
And we did budget for this, I had these um estimates while we were doing the budget, so it's already.
Okay, now, you said we do this every two or three years.
Third year.
So this is the third year, not really? Um, is our line still looking pretty good? Um, the question I had then was, is this in line with the last, I mean, with.
Yeah.
Understandable increase, but.
Yeah, it's a little bit higher, but not much.
But it didn't, not eighty percent or something.
No, no, no.
Any other discussion?
Might be nice if we had another bid, but, oh well.
I think everybody's just so busy.
Surprised, yeah, Goodrich is supposed to be busy, busy.
Roll call, trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Fajewski.
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, let's do it again.
Yes, Eagle Supply, um every year we strip the wax um floors and have them redo it. Eagle Supply, last year it was seventeen hundred, um so this current bid went up to twenty seven hundred. I did reach out to them and asked if there was a mistake or anything. And um he did say they took another three hundred dollars off of it, because we have the carpet and they won't be waxing the front entryway. So the actual bid is down to twenty four hundred. Uh, we did reach out to Service Master and Serve Pro. And no one's come to give us a quote, and I got this quote in January, so we've been trying since January to get other quotes and not been able to.
Can I, um, I think later in our meeting, are we having discussion? About a maintenance person? And.
I don't, it's not on the agenda.
The agenda.
Oh, I thought we were talking about that at discussion. So, I guess.
Well.
But I just feel like we, we might have some other options out there, and right now, I think maybe we should put this on hold, at least for a month.
So you're making a motion to table it?
Yeah, I am making a motion to table this until we can do some more research.
I'll support.
Is there any other discussion? One thing I want to add to this is that we probably need to get um the, the. Living quarters at Southside, a quote for that as well. That's where it's, taking care of as well. So, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling um the floor refinishing quotes to the May nineteenth meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both was the same.
Then, then are you requesting that we have the, the other part on the agenda for that meeting as well?
Well, we could, you mean, talk about a, a maintenance person?
Yeah.
At the next, yeah, we can add that to the next agenda, I think we have to discuss it at some point.
Um, number three on new business, the ordinance, one fifty seven. Um sanitary sewer and water ordinance amendment, if you want to take that.
Okay, uh, we recently amended the sanitary sewer and water ordinance, uh, small amendment. We're, we're, this is another uh slight change and uh came to. Nathan from F and B's attention and Abby's that a change was uh required. Currently, section six point two states that all meters shall be the property of the township and shall at all times be under its control. That we're amending that or proposing to amend it to section six point two. Ownership, all meters and meter couplings shall be the property of the township and shall at all times be under its control. And so uh, the questions you can ask Abby, why we need that, I think um. Uh, it was just kind of an oversight before.
Yeah, I think so too, um, does anybody have any questions about that, or do you want to hear my, my spiel?
We can hear you.
So uh ultimately, we had a homeowner who's um. Had a leak issue and it happened at the coupling, basically, and previously, our ordinance says that we only are responsible for the meter. But we provide the meter and the couplings that go with the meter, and we give them to them and say you have to have this installed, and these are the couplings that go with it, so.
We require.
Yeah, we require.
Totally makes sense to me.
Right.
But they install it.
Correct, but they, we tell them they have to use uh what we give them. So for example, this particular case was plastic, um the couplings are plastic. But it's what we are, what we are supplying them, so they, that's what they have to use.
Who's they, the homeowner?
Whoever the, they.
Whoever the law.
Homeowner to install that.
Oh, okay.
But we have no control over who they have installed.
No.
Kind of be licensed.
Well, right, yeah, that has, yes, there has to be a license for it.
So we give them the coupling.
We give them.
They hire somebody to install it.
We give them the meter and the coupling and say it has to be installed, and then um F and G verifies that the meter is functioning correctly. Um.
How long after installation was this particular answer that been?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head.
Be interesting if it was like close in time, like six months or something as opposed to those nylon couplings if you.
We like to have speakers.
Good. So what was, what was the question again, I apologize?
I was just asking, you know, how close in time to when this meter was given to the homeowner to install?
Mm-hmm.
And the couplings, uh, before we had the.
So staff has called out there for a high water consumption work order, um during inspection of the water meter, we noticed a coupling. Before the meter, or before the meter, or excuse me, after the meter was dripping, and so at that time, you decided it'd be. Best to try to change out the meter and the coupling, just to make sure while we're already down in this crawl space, it's gonna be done right. At that time, the plastic coupling, which are fairly old at this point, I believe, stalled, installed with some of the plastic seventies water meters. Um, was brittle, and as we tried to turn it out of the um plumbing, it snapped inside there, so we had to call plumbing, plumber company inside to actually unsweat some copper. And put it back together, but that was like I said, the coupling that was originally in there was old and very brittle, yes.
And sacred PVC.
Yes, exactly, and so it's, it was a kind of a discussion with supervisor and I, just, we want a clarification exactly what the township is responsible for. What's a homeowner responsible for, for, just so we know going forward, what our responsibilities are as field technicians. And so when we do um get a new meter to home, we will either have the, if it's a brand new build, the plumber. We either usually install the meter with a meter couplings and all the Teflon tape and the gaskets are things, or if it's a meter replacement, we will change out the couplings ourselves. And put new couplings in there and take out the old couplings.
Okay, uh, so you're either supervising or installing new couplings?
Uh, if not supervising, then expecting afterwards.
Okay.
Uh, cause even after a meter gets installed, we have to go through and do the inspection for one, make sure the meter's hooked up in the right location. Uh, by township ordinance, not in a crawl space, it's an accessible spot, make sure it has the right orientation, make sure it's working correctly, make sure we have a wire going to the outside of the house. There's a few other things, but yeah, it's our responsibility to make sure we inspect this meter in some working proper condition.
And the couplings now are not the old type plastic.
Correct, yes, and if we do end up finding those plastic ones, we're pretty ginger about trying to get them out, um and we replace those with brass, since you know.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the old plastic in my house, you know, it breaks and blows my house.
So I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If the meter and or the coupling is, is damaged.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and needs to be replaced, are there circumstances by which? The township would be, would have that burden in as much as it's.
So by.
Our coupler?
Certainly, by the town, by township ordinance currently states, the township owns the meter and the couplings.
Right.
If they are damaged due to time, then the township will replace them at the township's cost, and due to neglect, whether it be freezing, whether it be dropping something on it, then it becomes the homeowner's responsibility.
Fair enough, that, that makes sense, yeah, cause that. Is that reasonably spelled out on here, or is that just known?
That's part of, that's, that's up there in the ordinance too.
Okay, fair, thank you.
So we make sure we take pictures of all, when we're doing work like this, we take pictures of it before and after, just in case it comes up on our report.
Alright, thank you.
Absolutely.
Tim, do you think this ordinance takes away that shield of?
No, we're fine, cause there are other provisions that specifically talk about a, a, an owner's responsibility.
Cause I take it this is a statutory requirement for this change, and my language, is that where it comes from?
I, I don't, I don't think it's a fairness thing, uh, more, it, this isn't statutory that we have to provide that.
No, that, that is, that is.
Responsibility, but.
Yeah, it's just an ordinance update from my understanding, and it's just one of those things where we want to make sure we're providing the best materials for the township's meter, meter itself. The meter is a township's property, we want to make sure what that it's being hooked up to is correct upon A W W A standards and the township ordinance standards.
So we're doing the couplings of both sides.
Yes, sir.
And it's clarification too.
Yes.
Yeah, because where the leak came from, it came from where one of the couplings was, and it was like, well, do we own, do we own that? The ordinance said that we only own the meter, so we want a clarification, because as Nathan said, we are the ones that give that to them. So if we're giving that to them and telling them you have to install this, then I feel we need to be responsible as well, okay?
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
You too.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Yeah, we, so that would entail a motion to introduce this proposed ordinance amendment and then at the May meeting, I'll, uh, publish a notice of the introduction at the May meeting. I'll, uh, remind Haley and Michelle to put it back on the agenda for adoption at that time.
I'll make a motion to, uh, introduce ordinance number one fifty seven, uh, sanitary sewer and water ordinance amendment.
I'll, I'll support that.
Any other discussion?
Roll call please. Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clark, yes, treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Kudus.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the scheduled meetings.
Um, this is because when we adopted the resolution at the budget meeting, we did not say that we wanted to move the Memorial Day meeting to the week before. So our resolution says that it would come the day after on Tuesday. None of us want to come here after a holiday weekend, so we'd like to bump it up to May nineteenth.
Some week before.
For the week before, the Monday before.
I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Or.
amended schedule.
Do we need a roll call for this?
No, it's in my mind.
Okay. Any other discussion? All of those in favor of changing the May meeting to May nineteenth signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed the same. Motion carried. Budget adjustments.
Okay, um, the first budget adjustment was for the internet department. When I did it, I missed a zero, so I only budgeted a hundred instead of a thousand. So that corrects that. The other one um, is in the building department. We've just added a GL called operating supplies because they needed to have. Haley, what were those books? We need by law to have them on file here for people to look at it anytime. We have not had them on file. So we've ordered them. We needed operating supplies as a GL in that department, so it was added. And we took money from elections to pay for those. Um, copies, we just missed budgeting in the water department for copies, so we put eight hundred dollars in there. And that's because I know Russ likes budget adjustments at every meeting.
For water department?
No, I didn't.
For the copies.
I don't, doesn't that be more than that?
Yeah, is, is that have anything to do with billings?
This is just for the rental, the.
Okay, not making the copies, so that was going to say that can't be. I see what you mean, part of their, the lease.
The lease covers so much.
Right.
So many copies, yeah.
How many copies do we have to have on hand for people?
Of these books?
Yeah.
One.
Okay.
They're like four hundred dollars.
Oh.
The set of books.
Oh, okay. All right.
So I guess I'll make that motion to accept the budget adjustment that's concerned.
Support.
Any other discussion? Uh, roll call. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Curl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Clark, yes, supervisor Kudus.
Yes.
Uh, moving on to item number six, the ice storm cleanup contributions. Uh, this is something that I am asking the board to approve, uh, in conjunction with our cleanup that we're doing with the county. Um, I've been working closely with the county, the county administrator, uh, and I've worked with him to try and get the brush site pickups arranged. Um, and we were unsure at that time if there was going to be a cost or not. The county is, uh, supplied their grounds and maintenance personnel to staff that, um, because we were not able to pay any of our personnel to go there and staff it. Um, but in return, since we were doing it kind of, uh, in conjunction with each other, um, looking to see if we can approve up to five thousand dollars to help support that. At this time, it looks like it may be all covered as far as, um, reimbursement and donation and kind of grant funding, uh, I'm sorry, not grant funding, um, contribution from the community. But if it was to come up that we needed to give them some money for doing that, I would like to go, go with five thousand dollars to do that. We do have the money in our budget. It would come out of our grounds and maintenance.
So a couple of questions. The, the contributions from the general public have just stopped by and gave us money to.
Uh, the county managed that end of it as far as getting donations and getting, um, the equipment donated to, to be out there. So they paid their grounds and maintenance to go out there, um. Uh, Chris Stevens from the fire department went out there and donated two days of his time to help, um, from the township side. I was out there a day as well, just to help get the brush and things off the trucks. And then they piled them up out at the airport road location. The county's ground and maintenance was out there helping, um, they got a chipper, like an industrial, I don't know the details, industrial type chipper, um, and then they loaded all that stuff into the chipper. Um, and I'm not sure of a cost, but to the best of my knowledge, it was going to be covered. Um, I just wanted to make sure that if we needed to help them and so did it together that we were able to do.
What was the outcome? Like, uh, the turnout, was it successful or?
It was successful. I don't have a number, but I do know, um, today was the last day for that, so I don't have a total. I can have that pre with the next board meeting if you'd like, um. But I know. It was well appreciated. Yeah, it was appreciated and successful. I know that there was a lot of people out there. The way that they did it is you brought your stuff out and they took down your name and, uh, address. Um, for reimbursement purposes if they can get, because like I said, they fronted whatever cost it was. Um, if they couldn't get donations, um, they fronted the cost for that and then they're looking to get reimbursement. If they can't, that's where I'm saying I'd like to be able to at least give them something for allowing us to also participate in that.
When you say reimbursement, you mean through FEMA?
We're hopeful for that, yeah.
Okay.
I just don't have.
If, if this board likes to do that, should we seek reimbursement from FEMA for that?
I don't know.
I don't know why.
I don't have an answer for that.
I don't know why we wouldn't. If it's storm related.
But then I don't think they're going to reimburse us for a voluntary payment.
But there's expenses associated with that, right?
I mean, we had other expenses here. I mean, there's our fire department, other volunteers and so on here did a great job of
Yeah.
care of people, but, um, the, uh, I think we might be ahead of ourselves a little bit here.
Yeah, I don't even know if that's even signed yet. I don't even know if that even signed.
I think that's, remember, there are emergency man.
Whoever signs that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I just feel like, I mean, if we actually got a list from, uh, um, county saying it costs us blah, 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 and this is our bottom line cost. And if anyone would like to help contribute towards this expense, then make a decision about this. I mean, it, what if it costs them five thousand dollars? That was it. And then we're paying the whole bill. I'm not, and I'm not saying that it is, but we did also contribute our um, skid steer there too, as to be used. And we did open up our facility. I don't think it's a bad idea, but I think we're a little ahead of the game of how much did it really cost the county to, to do this specific?
But we're just reserving it, right?
Right, so I guess I should clarify that in saying, um, what I think would be appropriate is that whatever, if there is a, if there is a total cost to that, that we split it fifty fifty with them up to five thousand dollars contribution from the township.
Fifty fifty with the county?
With the county for their cost incurred as well. Like I said, they were.
Cause the city did their own.
Correct, though I believe that the county drop off site was available for anybody in the county. I don't think it was restricted and people were, yeah, I don't believe that they turned people away. I can't verify that for sure.
I can't imagine.
I can't imagine that either. But again, it's just, uh, if, if there are costs incurred, can we help them fifty percent of two five thousand dollars?
I think that's the right thing to do. At least reserve the money, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not saying let's spend it. I'm just saying if they need, need the funds, can we help them out with it for partnering with us to do this?
If we do that, I'd kind of like to have proof of what the, what the expenses were.
Yeah, I've got no problem with that. I'm just looking for, can we, your market to say, hey, if we need to, um, we have the money there and we got, the board's already approved that we can and will provide, um, receipt.
Was this, was this an ask with other municipalities, you know?
This is something that the county administrator and I put together on our own. I mean, we were looking, people were asking for brush drop off and what, what we could do and as a township doesn't have the capability, we don't have a DPW that functions that capacity.
I guess I just wondered about, you know, every township in, in Alpine County was impacted by this. I realize that some more rural ones may not have had an issue with that. They just burn it or push it into a, into a field somewhere, but I just wasn't sure if others had been asked or not.
It was probably the number one phone call to that.
How's that?
Somebody going to come and.
Well, we're looking for a motion or I, I guess I'm not sure where we're at.
They can make a motion to table to the maybe.
Have support for that.
The table?
Yeah.
I'll support that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Maybe between, I mean, I'm just suggesting between now and then you and Jesse can get together and kind of maybe come up with some numbers.
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, today at noon was the last time to drop off the brush, so it's just kind of a.
And I don't think we're, like, nobody's opposed to paying their fair share, right?
And was this part of emergency management? Were they kind of coordinating this or was it all done through Jesse?
I'm not sure what emergency management, um, contributed to that. I just know that we were both looking for, uh, what we could do because we didn't have a place in the county had previously used that site. Uh, and when I asked about it, they said, yeah, let's work together to make it happen.
Talk to, uh, I have a reason to see her for something else anyways. I'll talk to Kim Elke and see what they're doing.
Yep, and for the May meeting, I should have numbers and be able to give you guys, um, inform whether or not we need to even give them money. Like I said, it was more just a let's square up with them and tell them that we're willing to pay our share for it. Um, all those in favor of tabling the ice storm cleanup contribution to the May meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carried. Chief Baker?
Where to start? So obviously, March was very busy for us. Uh, at the very end of March into the beginning of April with the ice storm, um, and the board packet mentioned that we responded to a hundred and seventy one calls, uh, for the month. And this is a continued three month cycle of, of great increases in our call buying. Um, so we can be looking at a significant number in the call volume at the end of the year. Um, the biggest thing was on March twenty ninth, uh, the crews that were on duty uh, answered twenty seven calls in, of for service in the twenty four hour period, twenty two of those from three P M to midnight. Um, the thing that, you know, I applaud our folks for was we answered every single call that we were, um, we were toned out for. So that's, uh, but a, a, a piece of them to say that they were here, that they wanted to respond, that they were willing to go out while the same things that were happening to the community were also happening to them. Um, so because of that, um, I would like to recognize a few of our folks and provide them with a token. So if I could have, uh, recruit firefighter Gavin Plum come up? So what I'm giving each of these firefighters, and this is a tradition in the fire services, a challenge coin. Um, on it, it says, thank you for your service with some of the fire department logo and some very poignant um, message on the front and then on the back of it is the firefighter prayer. So thank you.
Recruit firefighter Wyatt Smith. Firefighter in that context.
In this time period of the ice storm, uh, most of the paid on call, uh, obviously we're going to a lot of the, all the calls, those three spent probably more time here in that week than they did with their families. Um, so it's a very very honored to have them as part of this department because it, it showed their true commitment. Uh, gave Wyatt and Gavin a great opportunity that they've met the, uh, requirements for firefighter one, which means they can respond now to calls. So they got about a year's worth of experience in a week. Uh, because during that time period, we had a, a big structure fire along with all the calls for, uh, di- down power lines. And then the, the people that would normally call for any EMS type calls. Um, so with that, just in our paid on call ranks, there was two hundred and thirty five extra hours put in from majority of just those three individuals. Uh, and they didn't just, uh, uh, sit around and not do anything. They were over here helping serve meals, taking care of the individuals that were staying the night. Uh, I think they even, uh, came over and may have found a, a bunk to bunk next to a few of them. So, uh, they were able to get some rest, but I know it took them uh, a week or so to get rested back up. So, um, I, I'm very grateful for the three of you and your commitment to the department, but that's not the only people that we had. Um, we also had firefighter Avery Hoffman. I know she's not here tonight. But when we did the door to door, um, searches in the whole township, she kind of ran that out of the boardroom, uh, and kind of directed traffic, so to speak. So I wanted to recognize her as well. Um, because she is really on the, on that verge of maternity leave of the department. So she came in and, uh, spent some time uh, in here and wanted to make sure that she was doing her part as well. Uh, she's not one to take the accolades because whenever I told her she was doing a great job, she just kind of turned a shy eye at it. So, um, again, great, great, uh, thank you to Avery and then to our full time staff, um, firefighter Jim Stackwoods. So Jim was on duty that night of the ice storm. Uh, I was at a, uh, training session downstate and then a family function, so I missed all of it, but Jim made sure that I was kept in touch. He reached out to me several different times and let me know what was going on. And he took care of all of the responses, so I appreciate you, Jim. Lieutenant Chris Stevens. So Chris did a lot on, um, kind of the, the behind the scenes stuff because he got the township up with internet. Uh, he was, it was kind of, uh, shocking. I came in one morning, he was crashed out on the floor in here. I was like, I thought maybe we were, we just found somebody on the street and we were bringing him in. But, uh, no, Chris, it's been all night making sure that the generators were running, that, uh, we had internet service, that the power was on in the buildings, taking care of all of that, making sure that we had fuel for all the generators. So, Chris, thank you. And last but not least, um, somebody that, uh, kind of showed, uh, some great leadership in a new role and making sure that the township citizens were priority one. Um, and that's our supervisor.
Oh, very nice.
No.
So, um, again, busy times, that's what we're here for. Um, we're still working out a lot of things with my transition coming here. With my transition coming here, um, we are into our training taskbooks. Um, so all the firefighters have gotten their three-ring binders for training and they're in the midst of that. So we're trying to get everybody trained up to the same level. Um, we're looking at new equipment, new potentials of, of the shifts that we are working at. Because, uh, it's very difficult to do a five-hour shift during the weekday for our paid-on calls because it takes them away from their families. So we'll be working on things in that in the fire committee work group, uh, because they've come up with some great ideas. And we just want to make sure that everybody's voice is heard. So, um, that, that's as we move along, right? Uh, another really, two really good things are, uh, we talked about it last year about the D N R match grant. That has been successful. We were approved for that. We got the form signed. We'll be working on that probably next week to order the equipment if we haven't already done so. So that will be coming in. So that was a match grant, four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine and ninety-nine cents on both parts. So that's getting us, uh, a new RIT pack, which is rapid intervention, uh, for firefighters down. And then that everybody will have their own SCBA mask. Um, we also received a, um. Traffic, uh, highway safety grant for just under two thousand dollars. So that will be, we've, uh. Had to check cash the other day, hopefully, or whenever it was, um, and that will go in, we'll be getting some traffic. Um, safety equipment, cones and some things like that. So, uh, those will be very, very helpful. Still, our federal grants are on hold. Um, so we're still waiting on when those will be released. But we continue to look for other options of funding. Uh, we do have some equipment that is either Ben. Um, is getting old, that has issues or has now become inoperable. That will need to replace. Um, so trying to be as fiscally responsible as I can. Um, we talked about some of the stuff with your website, um, the, the webpage that needs to be re-upped. For things like that, we've really got to focus on making sure that we're spending the money appropriately. Because those are vital links to the community and our services. Um, and I hope that the fire department will be included into the web design and concept for our page. Um, because I think that's very, very important for us to get our message out to the community. Um, with that, we need to be able to spend that kind of money to make it. Accessible to all in the community. Um, I've looked at different things of spending money on the fire department side. And I'm very hesitant on some of it. I've talked to a couple of the trustees about doing some S O P work. I had a quote of, oh, up to about thirty thousand dollars to get an S O P concept written. And implemented within a year. Um, obviously thirty thousand dollars is a, is a hard sell. Um, but what I've looked into now is using A I to help us figure that out. Um, also I've got a lot of good friends that have that same kind of program and now it's. How, how can you share that with us and make our, our process that much better? Because I'd like to take our, our fire department in steps that will get us to where I think we need to be. In a year or two, obviously being a two-year contract and wanting to get us there fast. Um, but something that's not going to take five to six years to get us where we need to be. Um, so, uh, in, within closing. Um, it is, uh, National Firefighter, um, Fallen Firefighter Memorial Weekend coming up all this week. Um, with some craziness that happened today, I'm buying some red lights. Uh, we should have red lights at each of the stations. Hopefully they'll shine up. But I asked you before we leave today, at the end of the meeting, that invite all the board members to come out. We'll pull the trucks out, get a picture and then submit it to our Facebook page. Uh, cause we are now listed on the National Registry for Fallen Firefighters. Taking the, uh, commitment to recognize fallen firefighters and light the night red. So I thank you. I'll be also looking into ringing the bells this weekend. Um, so if you have any, um. Churches that you think that would help us out in that memorial on the third or fourth. I'd like to make contact with them so we could have a fire truck out to one of the services where they would ring a bell in honor of fallen firefighters. Any questions?
I'd like to also request a picture of you with your award members.
Yes.
After too, just so we can have that special picture.
And I was going to recognize somebody else, but they didn't want any recognitions.
Michelle.
That would be my fiancee to me, but spent a lot of hours in here helping out.
Yeah, she was here every day.
So caring and loving with everybody that came in.
So thank you.
Moving on to item number eight, the window quotes. So we've been looking since I started here at, uh, the potential to replace the windows on the. East wing of the office, uh, portion, the west wing was replaced. Was that recently, recently, is the one up here? Yeah.
Up front or in the back?
Up front, I don't know. Your place. Um, so we've been talking about that. Uh, we recognize that it will be very difficult to get the funding necessary to. Buy us a new building, uh, but in the meantime, we need to start taking better care of our building and doing the maintenance that's necessary for it. Uh, so that being said, we did get some quotes, um, um, already in contracting.
But the question's going to be, do we try to get other quotes?
Right. So, so we did reach out, let me find my notepad. Um. We did reach out to several, one, two, three, three other local, uh, window places to get quotes. And, um, then we also reached out to like a chain, um, that didn't return. Our phone call, there is.
Who's this? Where you reached out to?
Uh, we reached out to Northeastern Window and Door, um, Alpine Glass. And we did get a very vague quote from Clark that was over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then we reached out to a window insideing warehouse, six, eight, five, eight, six, eight, four. Uh, and never received a response from them as well. There was one other person that our building official suggested that we contact. Um, and that is Ben Mishak. He did come and do like a drive around of the building with me back in, I don't know when that was. December, January, something. And the suggestion there was that we have the same people replace the windows that did the work up in the front. Uh, the difference for that being that they require a professional measurement. And so in order to do that, um, Ben quoted twelve hundred dollars just to do the measurement. And then that measurement would get sent off to that company for their quote. Uh, that is something that we can do if the board is interested in doing that as well.
How much was Ben's quote?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred just to measure.
Then you get the quote from the window company.
Right, right.
Then you have an install.
Well, so I just want to explain that though. My understanding, because I did ask Ben about that, my understanding of it was that, um, he, so like. If he gives them a measurement and the windows come back the wrong size, he is responsible for that. It wouldn't fall on the township. So he would end up having to remeasure and pay the difference or whatever the issue is with that, which is why he was saying. That he, uh, thought it would be twelve hundred dollars to do the quote to measure. And he also explained that the measurements for those windows back there, you would have to take the casings off because he believes that each one of those windows is a, uh. So each section is actually three different windows, so three measurements, um, just so that you guys understand that.
Uh, question, um, I noticed that, well, two questions at least.
Go on.
I, I don't want to break tradition, you know, I've been accused of asking too many questions. Um. I see that sadly, one bid, uh, two different windows. So we have an Anderson four hundred series and an Anderson one hundred series. What's up there?
I, I don't know what's up there. I was actually looking at those earlier when I was talking to Laura. They just say Anderson on them.
You're talking about up on here?
Yeah.
It may be on any paperwork that we got. I don't know.
I don't, I don't know when those were ever replaced, so I can't.
All right. So the Anderson four hundred series windows.
Yeah, but you wanted to work.
Uh, require maintenance. From what I read, on, on the Anderson website.
Yeah. And my understanding of that was that they required more as far as, um, like the staining and varnish.
Yeah, you gotta paint them, take care of all that. Whereas the Anderson one hundred series is a composite, which doesn't require that. So do you have to paint those up there?
No, no.
All right. Big numbers.
And also that dated that quote with the Anderson four hundred was. The thirteenth of March. I, and I was trying to figure out, I think you just figured it out. And March seventeenth was the second quote, which was lower.
Well, it's a significantly different window.
My understanding is that the, uh, second quote, well, the first quote, the sixty-eight thousand, three ninety-three is a commercial type.
Yeah, it, it's, they're both residential type windows, but they're, uh, I did all my little research. I brought A I into the picture. And so the only, the difference is the four hundred is a, got an R four value. And you got, it's got some maintenance. So you gotta paint it every once in a while, uh, on the inside. Uh, and the one hundred series is, is maintenance-free. It's a composite type window.
But what's the R factor in that?
Didn't say, but R four isn't much.
Yeah.
You know, if, if they're caulked well, you'll bring the R value up.
Do you want to plastic wrap them afterwards? We?
No, I think I, I would hope that, that they would do all that sort of stuff, but it just bothers me that we can't, we, we. We can't live up to our own bids. We can't live up to our own expectation of R F P. And so, uh. It, it's, it's just, I have no idea if, if either one of those are, are reasonable numbers, right?
Well, we did talk to the building official today and he did look at both, both.
Yeah, his suggestion and if, my suggestion, if we're going to vote on this today and choose one of these would be to do that one hundred. Uh, based off of talking to the building official.
Well, I would agree simply because the other one pays way more money and you gotta paint it from time to time.
Go ahead. Uh, thank you for your other resources.
Um, so I'd like to just kind of put everybody's mind back to a spot where we were talking about a jetter. At a few meetings ago, and we either pay X amount of money and buy a brand-new jetter or we spend X amount of. Four hundred, fifteen hundred, whatever it was, to have it looked at, to see if it could be rebuilt or what that all came about. So this could be a similar situation. If we did hire Ben Mishak to come and do the measurements for twelve hundred dollars, I know when those doors and windows were purchased. I was told that we got a really good deal on those windows because we basically paid. What a business in town would have to pay to buy them and then sell them. So I know the former supervisor had said that we did get a very good price on those doors and windows. They came out from Ohio and. The company did and they installed them. Is it worth spending twelve hundred dollars to pay Ben Mishak to come and measure the windows? And like you said, it would fall on him and not us if he gave them a wrong measurement. Just to get then get a quote from that company in Ohio and see how that compares to these quotes.
I might have a different suggestion in addition to that, or, or, uh. I would think that, wouldn't Anderson as a company have a representative that could come here and measure that stuff? No. Really?
It's done by the distributor that he would.
And my understanding of the front windows is that we basically got like wholesale pricing on them. Um, and I did talk to Ben about that as well when he was, uh, showing me the other windows.
Isn't a guarantee we'd get wholesale pricing?
I have no idea. Certainly I wouldn't think so.
But we could investigate that further with Ben.
The longer you wait, the higher the price goes. I mean, it's just gonna, it's not gonna come down, I don't think.
Oh, there.
Yeah. So the question here is, do we, uh, make a motion to accept one of these or do we table it and try and get?
Or make a motion to approve having that?
Yeah.
Or just not do anything.
The only question I had was Steve had mentioned these are residential window applications, which troubles me.
Well, I mean, I, I'll qualify that by just saying what I read. Uh, I, I don't know if I would have bring up a series four hundred Anderson window on my, on my phone if it would say. Residential or commercial or a window.
Yeah, I just, you know, if you said an R factor, I, you know, are they triple glazed, double glazed? You know, I mean, you know, how much? R factor can you get out of? One piece or four pieces of glass?
I thought I asked a lot of questions.
I bet you an attorney firm.
And we've had good service and work from already in the past.
And the thing is, it is cold back there. I mean, everybody's cold. And that, uh, they'll, except, but, but everybody's cold and they have heaters going and it costs a lot of money to run these old electric heaters.
Well, that's why I asked that question.
So it's something that needs to be done. It's, right. And again, this building is not.
Are those all like aluminum clad windows? Okay. So that's where the cold's coming in. Just a.
Well, or if they're single pane.
Well, yeah, just that the aluminum.
They're original to the building.
Yeah.
So you could get everybody a sweater.
I'd like to make the motion to table this till we get some better information. There's a lot to windows.
So I guess what more information do you want? I think you have to be very specific on what you're looking for, Norm.
Cause this has been worked on norm for about three months.
Three months.
At least.
And.
Well, I want to make sure it solves your cold problem. Uh, so I'd like to see are they, you know, I would think for this application, they will be triple glaze.
Yeah.
But.
I'm not a window expert, so I certainly can't weigh in. I can only tell you what I was, by understanding what I was recommended to me.
I was a window rep for thirteen years and there's a lot to windows and just a name and two numbers. There's a lot of difference.
Should we wait till Kevin comes back so he can get?
I guess, but we need to know what more information Norm wants so we can get it to him. I don't know what to get, what more information to get.
Try and get with reputable dealers to see if you can get them to come in and give you a quote and explain the windows to you what you're doing.
But we've done that.
So that's the issue that we can't get anybody.
It is very reputable.
Could Meridian bring in the, I think what you're saying is could the Meridian bring in the Anderson rep?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I, the only, to, in my opinion, I think we have. Well, out of these two, obviously, I mean, I would recommend going with the lower one, but there are other option is to get ahold of Ben Mishak.
Do you want low E or do you not want low E?
Pardon me? I didn't hear what you said.
Well, just you're talking about windows. Do you want low E or do you not want low E? What is that? That's, that's part of the windows like a car. Do you want a heater? Do you want our windows? You, it's, there's a lot to windows and I think just to take a couple of numbers and. Slide it in there because it looks pretty because somebody doesn't know. I mean, we've got some good dealers in this community. I think if you talk to them, they'll. They'll, they'll come in and give you some information or a quote.
How many dealers have we called that haven't even shown up?
Right.
That we have called numerous times, Norm. We've called Alpine Glass numerous times. We've called Northeastern Window and Door numerous times.
Do, do you have a suggestion of some, like somebody else to call?
No, I, I don't, I don't, I don't like to recommend anybody. So I, I, but there, there is qualified dealers in this town that can give you the information.
But they're not re, they're not.
But if they don't return our calls.
Then that, I guess then you take the chance and buy the window that you think is the best and, and go for it.
Cause we've been working on this for three months trying to get people to come.
But you don't have enough information.
I will say one thing that's interesting is that on the bid spec for the lower valued one. It says to stain and varnish the interior of the windows, but they don't require it.
Cause it's a wood window.
Yes, because I talked to Ted. Oh, so when Ted came, well, when all of these people came, they're like, this is. Going to be a very hard project to do.
Okay.
I was first off the bat, these windows are done. So Ted came, measured everything and he said, what do you want it to look like? Have your room with the windows, down with the windows. So he's going to model. What the copy room and what Laura's office looks like. So when he says stain, those windows in there have a, a stained. They're set in.
The window casing.
Oh, okay. So just, just that. Okay. So not the window, but the, but the sill.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
All right. Should look like to match the other.
Well, that clears that. Thank.
Thank you, Haley. Thank you, Haley. But it doesn't mean we have to go in every few years and re-stain because they're good.
Taking a field trip.
You don't think you believe in it?
I guess, and to call Nishak, I mean, it's the same thing as the jetter, you spend twelve hundred, you have Nishak come and say. You know, is it, what are these gonna cost, what do you think, or whatever the one stuff for it, or do it? Well, if it was a bad idea, then.
Are you gonna pay for it?
Asking for a friend like fifty some thousand.
Got a new one, oh, okay. Cash's mouth is writing checks, maybe that is checkbook can't cash.
I thi- I think I did make a motion to table this to get uh better information.
Oh.
I shot down on that.
There's a motion on the table, did anybody support it?
What, to table?
To table.
I'm I second that. No, you may wanna take a little bit. Pardon? Yeah, it looks like they're double pane, are they keeping you warm enough?
I don't know that those windows, what series those windows are is part of the discussion as well, we'd have to go back and look.
It'll be on the corner of the window.
I so I did look at the ones, okay, I looked at the ones in Laura's office, but I couldn't, it just said Anderson.
I wondered what we're doing looking at my window.
That's that's what I was doing, just doing my research, not really, okay. Roll roll call? Okay, all those in favor of tabling the window quotes to the May nineteenth meeting? Um, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed signify by.
Um, you guys are saying nay.
Motion carried. Okay. Uh.
So I guess who's gonna get more information and what information are they gonna get?
I don't know enough about it, more if to know what to get, but. I can go ask questions, you can go ask questions, you know more than I do.
If someone has a suggestion of a place that we can call out or a contact that will return our calls or come and measure, uh, that would be great.
Like, what I would suggest is. Is. If you call Anderson, they will give you a list of distributors in a particular geographic area.
So we'll tell them.
But they still have to call you back.
I understand that, but if that, but if but if we go in by saying, we contacted Anderson and you were on the list. They probably don't want Anderson finding out that they that they're snubbing their product.
So I think what Steve is saying is he's gonna call Anderson.
Right, that would be great.
I mean, I can I can try.
With somebody.
Sheesh, like I don't have enough to do.
You know, the squeaky wheel gets more chores. Uh, okay, can we move on?
Now, be before we move on, I I'm I'm so we're 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 kind of in a. Call him right now, well, the problem is is that those are all Anderson windows in there.
Do we have to get Anderson?
Well, they'll look funny.
Wow.
Oh.
Cause they're not gonna look the same.
Nobody looks up there and says, oh, these windows back here are hell.
So. I guarantee you would.
Really?
Wouldn't do half an Anderson.
Look at the rest. Now, come on.
Police is a hot pot.
Well, honestly, it would look. It would start to look like that.
Okay, fixing my car, any other discussion regarding the windows? I'm moving on now. Okay.
Keep following up.
Number, um, and Steve, I'll work with you too.
That could take two or three months for me to do this, I'm a little busy.
Oh, listen, listen, hell, okay, um, the ready to serve charge evaluation, I wanna talk to you guys about this. Uh, this is something that came up in conversation with John Lund, who is our rate specialist that we've been in contact with. She is who we communicated with to determine our rate increases. Um. So the letter that she wrote is basically discussing a study, a almost like a forensic study that would be done. It would show changes to each. Uh, water utility, water sewer utility account and how that if we were to change from a. Uh, what we're doing right now, the universal minimum bill of uh seven thousand gallons. To what it would look like if we were to actually go in and bill for.
Actual.
Actual usage, so part of this is um. Something that we've been looking at in regard to getting new meters and what the function of the new meters would be, um. And so there's obviously a cost to that, but. Uh, if we're gonna spend the money to get the new meters that are capable of basically telling us in real time water usage. Uh, to help us figure out with leak detection and and stuff like that, then. Uh, we need to, I think, look into going to actual usage, um, and so to do that, Dawn would have to break down, break down every account that we have. Um, look at it and figure out how it would change each account, and so we would be in effect adding a ready to serve charge. Which would change our rates again, um, it would most likely lower our rates. Uh, but it adds, I'm sorry, the, what do you call it, the commodity charge?
Body is the.
The rate.
Right.
Rate, so it would lower, likely lower the commodity, but it would add a service charge and the service charge would be based on the meter size. For um each meter, residential meters roughly being all the same, business meters would uh depend. Again, on the size of their meter, so Dawn and I had talked about this before, um.
If I understand correctly, though, she would break it down and we would know exactly how many residents it would affect positively and how many it would affect negatively.
Correct.
It would, she would try to balance that out.
Yep, and that's part of what um the the project that she would do. It would, it would give us a clear picture of exactly how it would affect each customer, uh, each residential cus- customer. Based on whether or not they used, actually use the minimum, based on if they use over the minimum, and then again, all the businesses. Um, and it would tell us for each account separately.
So it would let us know whether we wanted to change to a ready to serve charge or not.
It would cost us five to seven thousand for her to do that?
Yeah. That is something that she personally will do, um.
Would it be just residential or would it also include a commercial and?
Would come, it would include.
Like churches.
Yeah, it would include everything and that's based on the meter size that they have in their business and that's how the ready to serve charge is based. Um, a lot of other areas do this, she did tell me that about thirty or thirty-three percent of Michigan. Water wastewater utilities do the um universal minimum that we do.
Thirty to thirty-five?
Yeah, I I believe she said somewhere between thirty, thirty-three, thirty-five percent currently bill the same way that we know. So.
Well, having been a lot owner out in Preskill, uh. Having had a lot and. In the Preskill development, and they had a uh. Charge for vacant lots, so I think it's ready to serve kind of. Wasn't real popular. Out there, but they had a, they had a ton of vacant lots, you know, uh, at that point, this is back in the eighties, so, um. And and the other thing that I'm concerned about is how does it affect real low users like a church who. Doesn't have that much.
And that's what the study will let us know how it would affect.
Yeah.
So for example, it would decrease if you don't use the minimum. You would be paying for the actual usage that if you use two thousand gallons, you pay for two thousand gallons, right now, if you use two thousand gallons, you're paying for seven thousand gallons. But we have a very, um, I don't think we have a ready to serve charge. So we have a higher commodity rate, which is why if you look at the water bills and you hear the customers. Uh, comments about it, it seems like our water rates are very high, it's because of the commodity charge and a lot of other areas. Um, seventy-ish percent of the state uses the ready to serve charge. So what that would do is you'd say, and these are just made up numbers, if you have a residential uh meter. It would be, let's say, twenty-five dollars a month that you're paying as. Uh, the ready to serve fee and what that means is it's basically maintenance on the system, so that we know that. If your water is shut off, you're paying the same amount, everybody's paying that same amount, but you're not getting the monthly minimum. Um, if you're using. So again, if you're not using the minimum, it would decrease your bill because it would decrease the. Commodity rate, which is what we charge per gallon.
If I understand correctly, once Dawn is done, she would come in person and give a presentation to the board to make sure we all fully understood.
Correct.
I think the other thing, if we look downstream some, the city uh has the um. Ready to serve fee, they they do that on whatever the usage is. And and we're opposite of that, and so as we as we get further downstream, especially through this litigation. And once we go into getting a company that is going to work with rate modeling, that would help. Uh, the the whole process, so it it seems like we need to look at to me.
And again, she would. She would detect, that's, it's probably me. Oh, go ahead, Tracy.
What is this UFS, we still owe twenty-eight thousand nine or or twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars for?
Um, where are you looking at that?
Well, I'm on paid expenditures that I received, and it's a UFS financial services. We approved it in April twenty-four, we still owe him twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars, or what?
That is the rate study that she did, we haven't been billed on that rate study.
Okay.
We haven't been billed from her for.
This encompass some of that?
No. The rate study is on our current. Bill plan. This will be a separate bill, a different type of billing.
I'd sure check into it.
Well, I think we already have, that's why she gave us the cost. This is a.
Is she recommending this?
So it can go either way, um. The conversation that we had two months ago or three months ago was. Um, a portion of the time, people go through with the study and don't choose to go to the ready to serve charge. Because it it can have drastic effects on people's bills, in our situation, I think that's less likely, and the reason for that is because we. Um. Have more residential use and a lot of customers who don't use the. The seven thousand, and so it would break that down, it would tell us exactly how many customers we have that use the minimum and that don't use the minimum. And exactly how it would affect every single bill that comes through our our utility billing, so every single bill would, we would be able to see how it would. Um, affect their account, and there's room in there to make the adjustments, that's what the rate structure is designed to do. So that one side over here isn't getting overcharged, whereas someone over here is paying way less than they should be. It helps to balance that out and make it a fair, um. Fair rate structure based on their usage and again, their meter size.
So a seasonal person that goes to the south for four to seven months.
Right.
The year, it would help them.
So it would, it would help them if they, that's kind of sticky, so right now, if they don't shut their water off when they leave. They don't get it, if I'm sorry, if they shut their water off and they go south or wherever they're going, they don't get a bill at all.
Well, if we shut it up or.
If we shut the water off, if we don't shut the water off, they get the minimum bill.
But they still have to pay fifty dollars to have it turned off.
So they're still paying to have it turned off and turned on.
Yeah.
Whereas the ready to serve charge, my understanding of it is that if they didn't use the water at all, they would pay, let's say, the twenty-five dollars a month.
Because it's always there, ready.
Correct, it's always there and they have the capacity to turn it on, and again, you have to think about the long term effects of doing the maintenance on the system. Which, you know, is is a portion of why we had to do the rate increases, we need to recognize the fact that we, um. Our system is continuing to get older, so. I think it would help to balance that out, and again, that's what her study would tell us, uh, and she would come here. After she did the study, she would come here and give us a presentation personally so that we could understand and ask any questions that we had.
I'll make a motion, then we move forward with the setting.
I'll support that, is there any other discussion?
I just have a question for Steve then, you think this would be an additional? Help in the in the other, in the litigation aspect of this?
Well, it it would, it would give us consistency, whether or not it helps, I don't know, but uh it we have consistent billing, so. So. It would probably be easier to establish a reasonable rate based upon. Similar parameters. But I can't answer your question, I hope so.
Go ahead, um, I just was curious, once she would do do this study, how long does it take her to do it? Like, does it take three months for her to do it?
That is based, uh, it depends on us, uh, our utility billing department would need to go through. And pull some information for her, um, as far as the meters, unfortunately. My understanding is that whenever things got um collaborated into. Uh, BSNA, not all of the information ported over, so we're struggling with that as far as finding, knowing precisely what meter. Each residence, each business, whatever has, so F and B is gonna work on that and making sure that we have all of the meters accurate and and logged into our system. Once we have all that information for her, um, she would then start the study, it, I I don't have a timeframe, I would guess two, two to three months. Um. Between getting the meters and all of the information that she needs and then her actually doing the study. As far as the residential to help speed this up, we would assume initially that all residential has the five eighths and three quarters meters. Which is a standard residential size.
When you said about tr- bringing information over and not all, what what do you refer your shots now?
So the you, uh, the, I don't know, I wanna say USB, the BSNA software doesn't have every. Uh, meter size for every account logged into it, so that's something that our water billing will have to, and what, I believe with F and B together, we'll have to go in. Um, the field operators, when they're going to read the monthly reads on the larger usage accounts. Will have to go in and actually verify the um meter size, which is good, we need that information anyways and we should have that. So this will allow us to go in, make sure that we know the meter size and that is again, how they would determine the ready to serve charge, but she needs that information. Yes.
So then there's a hidden cost of whatever additional F and V time it takes to go check those meetings.
F and V is already reading the meters, they would already be going to read the meters, so.
I know, but they don't go inside to look at them.
Um, can you, can you speak to that?
Say free.
Say that one more time, please.
So i- if we're just asking you to go find out what sides the meters are. For places we don't know what size.
Correct.
Um. I I I can't even give you a number of how many that would be, but.
Certainly, so I.
But you probably know better than I.
Certainly, so we're su- we're assuming that every ro- homeowner homeowner is gonna have the exact same meter size, which is a five co- five eighths by three quarter meter. So that's gonna be all our residential, it's gonna be five eighths by three quarters, where it comes in in true, being interesting is the businesses we have, whether the apartment complexes. Uh, your big box stores and stuff like that, in that case, we'll actually have to go inside and do the meter read itself and verify the meter information we have. Is accurate and it's, or we just don't have any meter information at all, and that'd just be an inside work order that we would. Create in the house for just our normal day to day operations, there's no extra charge for that.
Go ahead. Accounts, you have to do this.
I mean, depends how many business accounts we have, but we could probably save maybe a hundred or so.
I think that was somewhere between one and two hundred.
And and depends what kind of the, and depends what kind of business it is too, they may have more than one meter, for example, Meyer has. Two meters and one that just feeds a gardening department, one that feeds their uh docking station, so. Each one of those meters there, we'd have to just go verify what the meter size is, make sure we have the correct information on it, but I mean, that's a two minute job. To go inside the meter, go inside the business and see the meter and get two pictures of it.
Lot of additional costs to us.
I've seen no additional cost to us from to you, cause that stuff will complete during our normal eight hour workday.
So it is free.
Yep, Steve.
I heard it twice.
Yep, your hotels, grocery stores, like I said, apartment complexes, churches.
Churches have a different sized meter.
Yeah, I mean, it the meter size depends on a couple of things, it depends on the occupancy of the place, how much water they need. If it's a fire protection or anything like that, and just what your normal water demands would be. Uh, so for example, Aldi's has a couple of different meters in it for one for irrigation, one for their normal domestic. But they have a six inch line being fed to a lot to feed a fire hydrant and their internal fire suppressions in there, obviously, they don't have a six inch meter in there. But they have a six inch line that feeds your lot, so we would base our, we would base it just what we have on the meter size alone, because that's a service line actually feeding to the store.
Does it cost more for um churches to have holy water?
Oh, my God.
That's a denominational.
The water billing, uh, the water service, in case you guys haven't noticed in your eight years here, it's very complicated and I learn more and more every day. Uh, for which I am very thankful to have the people here that we have to explain it to them because it is a challenge.
We have a motion on the floor for this. Thank you, call the question, thanks.
Um. So the motion is to. So the motion is to to forward with the study. Yes. Um, roll call please. Trustee Polly.
No.
Trustee Lappman.
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Kuzimowski, yes.
But I feel that's about the question I wanted to ask of you. What were, were we taking this out of the budget?
Oh, professional contractual services. I thought it was gonna come out of the trustees' budget. No. Just kidding. Full of jokes today.
I've worked for three for long.
Same. Um, moving uh to the boardroom rental. This is kind of a pop up thing that just came across my desk last week. Um, a township resident reached out and said, hey, we are doing this knitting um retreat. And our location bailed on us at the last minute. I need to either find another place or cancel it. And she kind of gave me her information about it. And she's a local business owner. And again, she does live in the township. Um, she reached out and said, hey, is it possible to rent out your boardroom? And we kind of looked into it. We weren't sure. Um, I I do have the policy in front of me. Um, I verified with Tim as well. Um, and you guys have her, her letter.
May have the policy too, that was.
Okay.
How would we handle like the doors and lock?
The doors. So uh, everything in the township building is locked. Separately. So if they were gonna come in and rent the boardroom, they would get the key. I believe it's the key that you guys. Yep. Um, so there is one key. It would open the side door. They would be responsible to pick up the key at whatever time and date that they needed to pick it up and then um. Use the boardroom for what they're using it for and then drop it in the return box outside when they're done. The return, like. Right. Uh, that way we would be hands off. We don't have to worry about it. Cause that was initially one of the questions is how do we open and close the boardroom door for them? This particular case, they're asking to use it um Friday at noon and then Saturday and Sunday. And they would be done Sunday evening.
And the whole building locks down where the operating room is accessible is the boardroom and the kitchen. Everything else. And the bathroom.
And they wanna use the kitchen.
Um, I don't, do they?
But they said that in my letter.
I think it's a nice idea.
I think it is something that we can do for our community.
No.
I was like, oh, no.
In reviewing the policy, however.
Oh, sorry, I'm not the supervisor.
I'm sorry.
Trying to pretend like I was.
I noticed in the under eight point one eight fees and deposits that talked about the fee shall be paid at the time the reservation is made. This apparently the security deposit. In the case of a cancellation, the fee shall may re.
Yes, we need to adjust. Yes, I have it underlined on my sheet as well. Um.
May, I think is the word.
Maybe. I think it's missing the word be as well. Anyways, um.
Do we have a fee structure?
We do not currently have one, but the attorneys have graciously helped us draft something up. We would need to fill in the blanks.
Resolution with some blanks, yep. Whether, well, number one, what would the fee be? Would it be uh per use, per day, per hour?
So my suggestion for that, what I was looking at is um, if the board thinks it's reasonable, I would say renting it out for a hundred dollars a day. Two hundred and fifty dollars for the weekend. But I think that would be the board's decision. I think it could. Um, and then I would recommend a two hundred dollar refundable deposit pending we come in, I come in, I guess the supervisor. Um, comes in and and determines that everything is in shape and where it needs to be and we're good.
And that makes the deposit, what the amount of participated, it would be.
Like two fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't?
For the weekend.
So then.
So are you saying if it was, they were only renting it for a day, then the deposit would be a hundred dollars on top of their hundred dollar fee? If they're renting it for the weekend, the deposit would be two fifty.
Unless you wanna set.
I'm open to suggestions.
You know, you can, you don't have to do much damage, do a hundred dollars damage and but uh, you're probably breaking. Window in the door out there would be more than that.
What if, what if, would, would?
What if there's a protest?
Who could rent this? And for what purposes can they rent it? So no, so, so back in my old days.
Oh, here we go.
But it's.
Actually, those are probably not more and more right now.
Yeah. Well, the only reason I ask is because uh, years ago, um, it became somewhat. Popular to rent a township hall and then have a kegger.
Yes.
So.
Like Bailey Township.
So we can't.
Long Rapids have the best one.
So we did actually check into this. I actually spoke to Brian um. Kuski today, who is the enforcement person for liquor control. Um, and he sent me some information regarding the different statutes for alcohol. We were able to clarify on here where it says.
Smoking.
About, yeah.
Two one.
Eight point, is that what it is? So we did determine that that is separate, the alcohol free workplace would is during business hours. Um, and there are rules that would go into the application.
Yeah.
For whoever wanted to rent it.
Right.
As a township, I don't think, um.
I'm setting you up a little bit.
You, you go right ahead, cause I, I got the answers right here.
Well, so, so if I, if I do say so myself, I drafted a rather nice agreement. Uh, with all of the townships that we use. And I, I think if you called. Um, Luciana, I think, might have that. The already all spelled out, fill in the blank. It talks about.
For renting.
Yeah, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. It talks about all of that stuff. Uh, and it, one of the things that you you need to be careful of is that if people start sticking stuff all over the walls. And when they peel them off and the paint comes off, it's gonna be a whole lot more than a hundred bucks to fix that stuff. So.
And that can be something that is delineated in the rental agreement.
It's all spelled out in that agreement. And so.
So I'll call Luciana and get a copy of it.
Yeah, I I thi- I gotta believe they still have it. It was uh really brilliant, really.
I'm sure it was. I can't wait to read it. Well, they won't have for this weekend, so we can't.
Why was Karen shaking his head? So um. And then two hundred and fifty dollars Friday. Up to Friday through Sunday.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I would, my recommendation would be. And then the deposit, I mean, I'm, I'm open to suggestions.
So how would we do the deposit? Like they would write a check and then we would just hold the check? And if there's no damage, we'd give them the deposit check back and we would cash the one for the rental fee.
That's what I would, yeah, suggest, Tim, do.
That's fine with me. And then, did you say two hundred for the um, or you're, you're debating that?
I'm open to suggestions. It's just a recommendation. For what was the de- the deposit, the refundable deposit, two hundred dollars. We can do whatever you guys see fit.
I, I think two hundred or two fifty is fine. Uh, cause that should stay the same, no matter whether they rent it for a half a day or or two and a half days.
Right.
Do, do township residents get a benefit?
So that's again, something that we can determine.
Um, I, I think they should.
I think they should too.
Uh, and I think that if, if you're a township resident, maybe a hundred bucks. If you're not a township resident. Maybe a hundred and twenty five dollars or something.
You mean on the deposit or on the rent?
No, on the rental.
So I did talk to Maple Ridge Township clerk and ask uh what they did. And I think, I don't know if I submitted that to you guys or not. Um, but yeah, they do something similar. Their hall is a little bit different. So when. Their fees are based on what parts of the hall you're renting, or if you're renting it as a total. And they said they do a local resident versus outside of township. Um, and they also charge a department based on whether or not alcohol will be involved.
Right. No, Long Rapids. Or maybe a hundred and fifty for non-residents.
I would go a hundred and fifty for non-residents. At this late, this person's a resident.
All right. So is there a minimum age that one can rent this joint? Cause that's where you're gonna get trouble.
Twenty five.
Yes. There should be a minimum age.
Doesn't have to be.
I guess I can't run it.
No, that's right. I mean, I, I think Long Rapids chose twenty five as a minimum age.
Not the same as renting a car.
Basically.
Be more responsible or something, you can say.
Presumably. Has never been proven, huh?
No, certainly not. Um, what else?
I would see, so we wanna put a minimum age. And I guess that would really be. Maybe we are, um, do a motion to amend the policy to stay.
Okay.
A minimum age.
Okay, okay. How old do they have to be to drink? Okay, so are we, are you asking for that motion now?
Yeah, let's.
Rent it, not twenty one to come.
Let's do a motion to amend uh the policy. It may be an eight, well, mine's outdated, so uh eight point one five. Maybe we add a policy. Who stops there? Maybe an eight point one six. The township board reserves a rate to refuse use of the facility for cause. Um, only uh minimum age for the rental shall be twenty, twenty five years.
I think even hotels do that when they're renting a room for a pool party or something like.
Okay. Someone wanna make that motion? I'll make that motion.
I'd like to change the language to eight.
You can have this happy and I would be happy to make myself another one.
All right, thanks.
Where the wording is often corrected, underlined, as you see there. Okay, so a motion to amend.
Eight point one.
Eight point one six to um also read the minimum age of rentals, twenty five years.
And to correct the table and.
To correct the table.
Section eight point one eight.
So what is, so are we just getting where the word shall or, or the fee shall be returned? May, I would remove shall and ask, add may.
Do you, are you gonna get a final of what this is?
Yeah, we'll get it.
Yeah, just so we can.
Yeah.
And it probably was needful of policy procedures. I mean, I would want to change.
Well, no, cause we're running on it right now, so.
Right.
You won't have to go through.
It what?
You will not have to.
Right.
Committee.
Pulling with me.
You guys in the audience are champs. Thank you for sitting through this.
So we are.
Okay.
And then what about they're making an official.
Oh, we're gonna, I've got a resolution.
Well, I made a motion to amend the policy and no one supported it.
Michelle, cause I support you.
No, Steve supported it.
Yeah, I said sport.
Steve supported it.
Sorry, Steve, I missed that. Okay, all those are in favor of amending policy eight point one six, uh, as previously stated. And eight point one eight and eight point one eight fix the table, um, signify by saying hi. I'll oppose the same. Motion carried.
Then we've got a resolution that uh ties into the policy for. Boardroom rental. It calls for the board to set the fee. And so if I'm right. Resolution, I'll uh revise it, give it to Haley and Michelle. So it will be for residents, one hundred dollars per day. For residents, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, Friday through Sunday rental, non-residents, one fifty per day, three fifty, uh, Friday through Sunday for non-residents. And a security deposit of, I didn't write that now. Two hundred?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, okay.
Do we need to um add anything in there as far as having? Whether or not there'll be alcohol? Or do we need to wait?
That would be in the board policy too.
Well, so it's not actually.
I mean, that's if you decided. Didn't want alcohol, um, we put that in the policy and alcohol's uh going to be allowed.
We don't need to.
We don't have to address it. We're gonna get Steve's form agreement. Uh, so. Yeah, but I'll take a look at that, uh, if we have any questions. So it'll address, you could, the language could be to follow.
Yeah, so you don't need a legal license if you're not selling.
I'm a morsa bar, cause you're having a bridal shopper. Well, there's no smoking on the building.
There's also.
It's still here. We can't tell people, or have, people come here and sell this all the time.
I'm sorry. So we can also just table this and work this out and allow them to use the facility this weekend.
Uh, for what it's worth, I would almost rep.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, for what it's worth, I would almost rather see us do that, because this is sounding very hot.
We're doing this weekend. Can we get a motion to table this conversation to the next meeting and allow? Um, yarns to go to use our facility this weekend. Charge.
We're not doing the resolution with the.
I think we're.
I'll just, I'll, I'll give us a, a better copy of this. We just.
So we're gonna print that resolution next meeting?
Right.
Okay, so this one we're just.
Sorry.
Allowing yarns to go.
You can, well, you wanna wait then on, on amending the policy to. Well, I, I think it's, I think the information will, will be helpful. Uh, because that will give you an opportunity to follow, uh, you know, to, to tie it together. And I think as far as this is a, this is a u- unique exception to, to this, and we should make it. And, you know, that this motion is, is unique and, and exception to our soon to be written policy.
So are you making the motion, Steve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so what is exactly your motion?
What I just said. I'll make a motion to allow. Um, yarns to go. Yarns to go and fabric, the use of the township hall as requested. Uh, understanding that this is an exception to our written policy.
A unique and resolution. Yes.
We do have a policy and procedure committee, uh, but we could turn this over and let them take care of it.
Yeah, I, whichever we.
Well, we, we have to wait for.
We're, yeah, I think we're, we're gonna wait to get.
See what it looks like.
I'll get that form from Lucian, get it to you guys.
Thanks.
So.
Well, I don't know a reason why we have to have a meeting.
There's a motion on the table to allow yarns to go, the use of the township hall under um this unique circumstance, free of charge from May. May, uh. Is it the second, from May second at noon, thank you, to May uh fourth in the afternoon. On a one time basis.
That's why we're gonna want to use it for free this weekend. No charge.
Is there support?
Support.
Rock. Same. Okay, all those in favor of, um. Allowing yarns to go to use the township hall this weekend under a unique circumstance, signify by saying I. Oppose. Motion carried. Thank you for working through that. Uh, so what, what exactly is the policy and procedure? Do we need to have a separate motion for that? Yes.
Yes.
So then we'll need another motion to table the resolution and policy changes. Uh, until the May nineteenth.
Well, actually, if it's gonna get. Bring it back. So just, I think we need a motion, but I think we just handle it at the committee level. Bring it back, uh, as a motion for the.
That's fine, let a committee deal with it. Okay, so no motion necessary. Okay.
Just let the chair deal with that.
Any other discussions? Okay, number eleven, finally, uh, the Alpena County Road Commission Road Maintenance Agreement. So I. Uh the Alpena County Road Commission Road Maintenance Agreement. So I rode with the road commission last week. We um were delayed. By a couple weeks because of the ice storm and everything after that. So we do not have an estimate yet from the road commission, what it, um what's or a. Um plan of importance for roads right now. Uh Mr. Bigden is working on that for me. I spoke to him this morning. He said he did not have the estimate ready. Um but we look forward to getting that in the next two weeks. Depending on how quickly he's able to get it to me, there's a potential that we could have a special meeting to approve it, or we could wait and approve it at the May nineteenth meeting.
Is there any urgency to do it before May nineteen?
Yeah, so the urgency with it is that the gravel road, so the dust control starts at the end of May. Um so I know it's a, it's unfortunate circumstance.
Did we already vote on the dust control?
We voted on the dust control, but this would be to do the gravel maintenance on roads that need it.
At the same time.
Well, so they like to get the gravel down and let it settle and get kind of worked, worked, I don't understand the terminology of it, but get it basically worked into the ground and set. Before they go and spray the dust control. Once they spray the dust control, they do not like to regrade and re-dig up the road because it defeats the purpose of the dust control. That, that makes sense. Um so.
That's control. So we need a motion to just.
This is just a little info. No, once I get the quote or the estimate um in the priority list, then. We'll reach out and either to a special meeting or wait until the nineteenth. Good. Any questions regarding that?
Nope.
Okay. Laura.
The um Omega Electric, um quote, we needed, um we got the cabinets done in the, my office in the front, it's fabulous. Um but we needed some outlets underneath the cabinets and the cabinets had to be in first before the electric, electricians could come and. Put the outlets in there and um. It was on my understanding that I said, can you keep it at five hundred dollars? Because that's how much I have the authority to spend, but it did come in a little bit more than that. Um so it's six sixty-five thirteen and that would come out of building and improvements and.
And then is this over and above what we'd already approved? Total six sixty-five is over and above? I mean, we hadn't anticipated. We hadn't anticipated this charge at all. I moved it.
Thank you. I'll support. That looks very nice.
Any discussion? Uh roll call.
Judge or Hillary Summers?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Ryder.
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Lafferty.
Yes.
Third Clavichia.
Yes. Second opportunity for public, listen, second opportunity for public comment. There is nobody online. If there's anybody in the audience with public comment, please approach this podium. Um this is not a time for discussion. Is there any discussion? I do have something, so if anybody else wants to talk first.
I'd just like to say something. I'd like to thank the fire department for all their extra hours and work that you gentlemen put in. I appreciate it and uh thanks for the job that you did. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would add to that, just putting the needs of others ahead of. There's some, at least some extent, your own family, so appreciate their very much.
Uh okay, so I do have a list here of people that I would like to thank who helped out during the ice storm. Uh we do have a list of volunteers, so I'm just gonna read through that quickly. Um this is as far as volunteering for our shelter with donating food and their services to help um feed the public that we are feeding. Um Samantha Steele, Joel LeFave, Jamie Boobalts, Carlos and Shannon Vivero, Bryce Jaiet. Pam Kramer, Tara Sharick, Tasha Lockhart. Uh Mike Kaufman and Linda Bennett, who were here from the Red Cross for several days, I think three days. Um Melanie Thomas. And then as far as um our fire department, our volunteers, Kevin Ginter, Matt Clemcheck. Tim Muggie, Kevin Galloway, Avery Hoffman Robertson, Jake Ordway, Beth Banks, Josh Greenwell. Markham Johnson, Gavin Plume and Wyatt Smith. Our full-time staff, Luke Meisner, Jim Stackowitz, Ryan Mandeika and Chris Stevens. Um our, our township staff, uh especially Michelle, Laura and Haley for helping us to make sure that we were able to get our payroll done. Um as most of you guys know, March thirty-first was the last day of our fiscal year. And we fought really hard tooth and nail to make sure that we were able to get payroll in and completed before the end of the fiscal year.
And I'm gonna interrupt you, um just to thank Chris Stevens from Rich Tower Network. Without his help getting us with internet, there is no way we could have gotten payroll done. It was the last day of the fiscal year for us, which is a very big day. And Chris made it all possible with all the charge with, he was just wonderful. Thank you very much. As usual, because of trust.
Yeah, so everybody got their paycheck because.
Fun time.
Because of Rich Shore Network, so thank you. Um on top of that, I would also like to thank W A T Z, they supplied um some emergency things for our first responders. I saw the bags at the cell site station. There were things like socks and snacks and things in that, uh which we greatly appreciate. I would also like to sh- thank Shannon Smolinski, who is the director of uh D P W for the city. She was instrumental in us getting a generator that we didn't think we were gonna be able to get and without that, um our, our water department would have been in. Hot water, frozen water. Separately, our, our friends at F and B, um Nathan Lidle, Cody Hendrickson and Jamie Hallahan as far. Uh as their help, they worked endless hours.
They were twenty-four around like clock too.
Yeah, they worked, I think, twelve-hour shifts um. To, to keep us going and they were out of the building um freezing and keeping our, our lift stations going. Uh you guys know how bad the storm was, but I can't even stress enough how much worse it would have been had our lift stations failed and we had sewage backing up, so. Um also Catherine Nguyen, um Kath was instrumental for that as well. Uh a face that we don't see as often as I would like to, uh Doug Mullen from F and B. Doug was amazing and helped us out so much. He came up here, he drove us um up a. A diesel tank, I think it was like a hundred-ish gallons, so that we had diesel fuel back here at our generator at all times. And also so that we can use that tank to fill the um portable generators and, and the um pumps. Um also Thunder Bakery donated two boxes of cookies. Um the Girl Scouts donated, I believe, seven boxes of cookies, boxes of cookies for us. Um the city of Taos, their water department um through the help of Kath and Doug. Uh got us a bypass pump up here so that we could use that um when our pumps weren't powered. We're really thankful to have that relationship with them. Uh I already mentioned um Samantha Steele, her kitchen donated a bunch of food so that we could cook. Those couple meals that we provided for the community. Um after everything was said and done, we did also get an offer from Walmart's corporate that in the future. Um as you guys know, they didn't have a generator up here, but they did get a generator and offered it to F and B staff if we needed that for any reason. Uh for our pumps and our lift stations in the future. Uh the chief was able to procure us many, many to-go boxes, which we are grateful for. We still have those uh as well. Um and speaking of the chief, thank you to Chief Baker and Tammy for your endless hours. Um we really appreciate the help that you gave us. And just you guys being here um was instrumental, especially those first couple days and us feeding people and keeping our. Our guests happy. Uh I'd also like to thank Bedrock. Bedrock provided us with fuel for our water department. I'm not sure if they provided it for our uh fire department, but. When our generator back here was low, they said, yeah, hey, come and fill up. Um I know that Chris Stevens. Uh took the generator, I'm sorry, the tank there and filled it up on at least one occasion. I know F and B filled it as well. Uh but there was no questions asked. They said, yep, come and, come and get the fuel that you need. Um wholesome also did the same with our emergency responders, um as well as Meyer saying, hey, if your responders need fuel, please come and, and get it. I have on my list uh Rich Tower Network as well, and I think you guys already understand the extent of the help that we received from them. Um also, Chris personally delivered generators to Beaver Lake and to Long Rapids for their warming shelters. On the county level, Sheriff Smith was outstanding and super helpful for us uh along with Cash. And I can't thank you guys for your help. Cash was here on day one, helping set up our warming shelter and um help us get stuff ready to serve people and get our cots and everything set up, so we're really grateful for that. And. Uh our, our emergency manager, Kim Elke, ma- many of you don't know this, but Kim kind of got thrown into that position. It's not really the position that she applied for and wanted. Um she got thrown into it and she was very helpful uh for us during that time. Also, last but certainly not least is the county administrator, Jesse Osner. Jesse was um. Basically by my side the whole time, helping me figure out what I needed to do and make sure that I was taking the right steps to move forward. Um and Jesse and Kim were instrumental in us getting the help that we needed and the donations that we needed as far as food and supplies go. Um so.
Did you mention Salvation Army?
Um I did not. The Salvation Army did donate, just one second. The Salvation Army did donate um. Uh paper sack lunches for us. We also, uh many of you don't know this, but we housed the search and rescue team. That came up uh for the night before. They helped us do this, the um countywide searches. We housed them that night and the next day they moved on to Presqueel um to do the door-to-door searches for them. Um so we're thankful for that as well.
And we just do one more thing. Um Michelle probably won't like this, but can we get all those names?
Yes.
Put in our minutes.
Well, we will work on that.
Oh, thank you.
I specifically asked her if that needed to happen.
We went through some real history. I think those folks deserve a little pat on the back and be put in our book.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure I'm missing people, um but as Laura just said, we also have the National Guard up here. Um the National Guard was helping us, the Friendship Room, Courtney Holmes um was very helpful in getting us food. She works for the Food Bank. Um so again, I cannot thank the community enough for everything that they did and the, the stepping up that happened that I didn't expect. Uh but I think that we came together and we, we did some really cool stuff. So, thank you guys. Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. I'll support that. All those in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye. Aye, oppose the same, meeting adjourned at eight oh two.